Good morning, this bright and early Saturday morning. We are very fortunate that the NSF sponsors a couple of sessions to tell us about their awards programs for early career investigators as well as for pre-doctoral students and doctoral students like yourselves. And then this morning, we are going to hear a little bit about those programs and you'll have an opportunity to ask questions. So you all should have been given cards. You can write your questions down, but there's also two microphones, so we'll take questions later. So with that, it brings me great pleasure to introduce Dr. Michelle Grimm, who is an Associate Professor of Biomedical Engineering currently at Wayne State, but moving to Michigan State, January 1. She has been a professor for over 20 years, but recently joined the NSF as a Program Officer initially in the Program for Engineering of Biomedical Systems and also Disability and Rehabilitation Engineering. But earlier this year, she switched over to the NSF program in biomechanics and mechanobiology, both in the Engineering Directorate. She's going to tell you about her experience with the Graduate Research Fellowship Program. And then we have four panel -- we have three panelists, three award winners, who are going to come up and share their experiences with you as well. So with that, I'll invite Dr. Grimm to the podium.
Good morning, and it desperate we all are for money that you guys are willing to be here at 8:00 on a Saturday. So thank you very much for coming out. All right, so these slides are -- have been given to me by the Program Directors for the GRFP program. So this program is not under my direct responsibility. I have, and it looks like they have it set for immediate advance, so while I say something, we will try to turn off the automatic advancement. Anyway, the GRFP program is not under my direct responsibility. However, I have in the past served as a reviewer there, and one of our panelists has served as a Program Officer overseeing the review. And so between us and the slides, hopefully the detailed questions we can answer, and then what really you're going to get the great amount of information from is our award winners who are going to give you all their tips and tricks. So anyway, thank you again for joining us this morning. There we go. Wonderful. Technology does work. Okay, so everybody in this room has at least heard of the NSF because you're in this room. But just to give you some background, NSF was formed in 1950 or founded in 1950. We've had the same mission since 1950, which is to promote the progress of science, to advance the national health prosperity and welfare, and to secure the national defense. And about 20 percent of all federally supported basic research at U.S. universities and colleges comes from the NSF. So it is a major supporter of basic science, basic engineering research in the country. Another part of the mission is to develop the workforce in STEM to support the U.S. moving forward. And that actually is to support each of those other three bullet points, is the idea that we need to have a great pipeline of individuals who are going to continue to advance the country in science and engineering. So the Graduate Research Fellowship Program is the one program at the NSF that the awards are made to individuals rather than institutions. All other awards go to a university even if there is a principal investigator. For GRFP, the award goes to you as students. And it is designed to recognize and importantly financially support students who have demonstrated potential to be the next generation of leaders in STEM. And a secondary goal is to broaden participation within engineering, science, mathematics of underrepresented groups. And this is something that goes across NSF. So there's a submission at NSF that is always in the back of our minds about wanting to increase the participation of underrepresented groups in STEM fields. So this is the application timeline for the GRFP program. And I'm just gonna -- I put this together last night, and it just seems like this wasn't the order I looked at it when I looked at it late last night. So either I'm losing my mind, or I have duplicate slides, but that's okay. So this is the timeline. And important pieces of information, who is applying this year for the GRFP? How many people have at least a really solid draft of their application written? Good, because you are all probably aware that it is due, I think it's Tuesday, right? So this is just your last little, last-minute tips and tricks. Those who are thinking of applying in the future, you now have a year to get organized and prepare your application. So be aware of deadlines. Deadlines are very important at the NSF, and you need to make sure things are in by the deadline, typically 5:00 PM, 0:00, no seconds, at the time, on the date of the deadline for your local timezone. So keep that in mind. Don't submit things late. Okay, what does the Fellowship offer? It's an amazing award. It offers a five-year award with three years of support at a stipend level of $34,000. It's expected that your institution that you're joining is going to continue the support for the other two years. It gives $12,000 in what's called educational allowance. This is to help the institution offset the cost of tuition, but the expectation is that you are not going to have to pay tuition, so even if you're going to a private institution with tuition that's much higher than that, the institution is expected to cover that. And so it does provide an amazing level of support to you for five years for your graduate studies. There are other programs that are affiliated with the GRFP program that you can also take advantage of. And two of these are the Graduate Research Internship Program, or GRIP, which allows you to intern with federal agencies, and the non-academic research internship, which can be attached to any NSF award, including a GRFP, so that you can do an internship in an industrial setting during your PhD. Fellows also have access to supercomputer time, which may be important for your research work. And there are career-life balance supplements that are available to you to help provide some support during periods of leave, so that you can actually maintain your progress towards your dissertation, but take any parental leave that you might need to. So all of these are things to keep in mind if you are successful at obtaining these in terms of building that overall doctoral education. So as I said, GRFPs go to individuals, not institutions, and they are completely flexible. You can take it wherever you like. So if you're applying and receive one as an undergrad, you get to choose the institution you want to go to. Most institutions are very excited to get GRFP award winners. It is not a guarantee that you will get admission to any particular graduate program. I have spoken with students over the years who, even though they were GRFP winners, did not get into their top choice doctoral program. So it's not a golden ticket, but close. And you can choose your advisor and choose your research project. So what you write on your application does not lock you into what project you're going to do for your dissertation. And that'll be important later when we talk about the research statements. There's no service requirement after you complete your fellowship, so you aren't required to spend a certain amount of time in academia or in any specific role to pay it back. You can attend any accredited U.S. institution to pursue your master's or PhD degree. It is extraordinarily competitive. There are 2,000 fellowships awarded each year. The success rate is about 16 percent. So it is prestigious, it is competitive, and it's a tremendous opportunity. So this is the solicitation page that everybody who has not already prepared their application for next week should make sure that they go and read. It includes all the deadlines, the description, the awards, the eligibility. All of the details are in the solicitation, so please take advantage of that website. So I want to go through some of these things, just so especially the people who haven't already started on their application are aware. In order to apply for GRFP, you must be a U.S. citizen, national, or permanent resident. You may apply as an undergraduate, a post-baccalaureate student who has not yet done any graduate school, or a first- or second-year graduate student. You need to be planning on pursuing a research-based master's or PhD in a STEM field, and then be planning on enrolling full-time the summer or fall after you receive the award. And once you accept the award, you need to notify the NSF as to what institution you're going to be enrolling at. There are four different academic levels that are considered, and the one in green is considered separately, so the first one from the other three. So as I said, you can apply as a senior, or somebody who has received a bachelor's degree but without studying in graduate school. Or you can apply as a first-year graduate student, or a second-year graduate student, or if you have had more than 12 months of graduate study, so you worked towards a master's degree, but you've had at least two years off, so you're coming back for a PhD, then you can also apply. Two, three, and four, you can only apply once under those levels. So that's something to keep in mind. I highly encourage everybody to apply first as an undergraduate, because that's a freebie. And you can apply, if you apply as a senior, and then you don't go straight to graduate school, you can keep applying for this before you start graduate school as many times as you want. So until that point where you start graduate school, you can keep submitting these applications. Okay? So we typically have said, well, you get one as an undergrad and then one as a grad student, but policy states until you start grad school, you haven't started that clock on that first graduate school application. So you can keep doing that. All right, what is the application process? Well, first, you have to identify your field of study. These are the major fields of study, and then there are subfields under this. Very confusing is the fact that bioengineering and biomedical engineering are both subfields of engineering. And Stephen can comment on this one, he gets up here. I haven't found that much difference when I've looked at the recipients in those two categories. Bioengineering would include more biological, but most of the things that are funded under there are still biomedical in my mind, and I think it's what people are comfortable with. So pick whichever program you think you want, but it really is the same thing. What GRFPs do not support, study towards an MD PhD, a JD PhD, so it can't be a joint program, degrees related to business administration or management, counseling or social work, education other than science and engineering education, so if you're pursuing a PhD in engineering education, that would count. Again, history unless it's history of science. If the research has a primarily disease-related goal, so if you are doing more NIH-style research, that would not satisfy NSF's requirements. So when you talk about your research plan, you want to focus on fundamental advances in engineering or science. It can have an overall goal of if this is solved, it may eventually impact human health. That's fine. You don't have to run away from that as a biomedical engineer, but you should not be thinking about clinical trials, first in animal studies of new implant designs, any of those much more translational research projects. So make sure that you do phrase it and talk with your mentors at your current institutions to make sure that it is presented as an NSF-relevant study. I knew I had that timeline in there again. See? I'm not losing my mind. Okay, the application, as we said, is due in late October. It contains five parts. The first one is the personal information, all the stuff you would typically put on a form and fill out, and it's data that is provided. There's then a three-page personal statement where you talk about your background and your future goals, two pages of a graduate research statement, transcripts which must be uploaded electronically, you have to work with your institution on that, and then three letters of reference. All NSF proposals are reviewed with two basic criteria in mind. One is intellectual merit, and one is broader impacts. And you can think about these, the intellectual merit is how is the work that you are describing going to advance knowledge within your field or across different fields? And broader impacts is how well does the activity benefit society or advance other societal outcomes? And both of those then are considered by reviewers when we look at these applications. So for intellectual, for both of these, they're slightly different in a GRFP proposal than they would be in a standard research proposal. So for intellectual merit, reviewers are really focused in on how are you going to, what's your potential to discover new knowledge? So the investment is in you as an individual. How are you going to contribute, not only through this project, but moving forward to advancing knowledge in your field? Some of the evidence from that will come throughout your application. So yes, it can take into account your grades, the curriculum, past awards. But it also really involves your plan to conduct research. Can you work as a team member? Can you work independently? Are you able to communicate your ideas? Are you able to solve problems and take initiative? All of this comes into how are you going to do as an individual to support the efforts in STEM now and throughout your career? And so this does not just come from your research plan. The assessment of this by the reviewers does not come just from the research plan, but it comes from your entire application, that they can take this information. Broader impacts, how are you as an individual going to benefit society? And how is the research area that you're thinking of going to benefit society? This is where framing your research project with that medical impact eventually can be important, so that you say, look, this is something that I want to do, and based on this, in 10 years, I think we can have a brain-computer interface that will allow people with ALS to be more productive. But you're talking about the basic work that's happening on the front end of that. So you want to discuss both how you are going to fit in to supporting society and supporting the U.S. in its STEM efforts, and how your research is going to also have a positive impact. If you're doing outreach to underrepresented groups, this is something that would also be considered. So all of this comes into play again in the broader impacts assessment, and once again, it's the entire application that supports the reviewer's assessment of these criteria. So for the personal statement in your GRFP, you want to tell a story. You want to demonstrate your potential. You want to talk about your experiences, how they're leading up to your success as a graduate student in this STEM field, and how that's then going to advance you in your career. This is not only for people considering academia, so don't feel like you're pigeonholed, okay? We are, within NSF, we do want people to go multiple directions with STEM. So if it happens to be that your goal is to get a PhD and then work in science policy, don't hide that. So actually tell your story, your true story. Don't try to tell the story you think the reviewers are going to want to see. Talk about your previous experience, internships, RU programs, research on campus, whatever you have that has brought you to this point. What drives your decision to go to graduate school? Okay? Mine was, I was not a GRFP award recipient, but part of my drive to graduate school was that I promised my mom in high school that I would get my PhD, and she would never have forgiven me if I hadn't gone on to get my PhD. Probably would not have written that, though, in my personal statement, but there's got to be something that's driving you to do this, okay? And again, tell your true story and make your personal statement personal. What are your career aspirations and your future goals? The research statement, you have two pages to describe what you are thinking of doing. Reviewers realize you have only two pages. This is not a full 15-page research proposal. But what are your ideas? How are you going to approach this? What question have you identified that you want to address? This can be more challenging if you're an undergrad applying for this, because you're not currently in a research lab, currently working towards your graduate project. But as I said, you're not locked into this. So come up with a compelling idea that you think would be neat to work on, that's doable. Figure out what your ideal lab would be to do it in, so you can kind of conceptualize how that would work. You are not locked into that for your dissertation project. So really put into what you would like to do right now, and then whatever you end up doing is fine. So don't feel that you're locked in moving forward. But take some time to describe this. When you're writing this, and I think this is extremely important for the review of this particular award program, you are writing for semi-experts. Yes, the people on your panels will be involved with biomedical engineering, or chemical engineering, or mechanical engineering, but if you're applying to a mechanical engineering sub-area, you're going to get people on that panel that are also experts in combustion and structures. And so you'd better explain your research project in terms that they actually understand. But the same holds true for biomedical engineers. We don't all have the same background. So write those two pages in a way that, yes, anybody reading it can understand what you are talking about. Reference letters, very important, somewhat outside of your control. Three reference letters are expected for the application, although they have changed it to say that if only two arrive, they'll still review your application if you wish, or you can withdraw it, so it doesn't count as an attempt. So if you really have reviewers or reference letters who don't get their letters in, you've got a backup plan. The other backup plan, which is the one I'd actually suggest you take advantage of, is you can include five reference letters in ranked order, so you have two backups, okay? Which means if one of your top three does not get their letter in on time, there are other ones hopefully that have that can then be considered by the review panel. You want your reference writers to really know your work. Don't go find a professor that maybe you had in a class junior year that you really haven't interacted with. They're not going to be able to write that personal letter for you. So really think about that and plan that out in advance as to who you're going to ask for your letters, and share the statements that you've drafted, even if they're not finalized. It's much easier for us as faculty members to write these letters if we can tie them into your personal story and reinforce what you're writing. The proposals are reviewed by panels of disciplinary and interdisciplinary scientists and engineers. They will be assigned to a panel based on the primary and secondary fields that you choose. And the advice is you choose the primary field of study that is most closely aligned with your proposed graduate field. Reviewers are told to look at these holistically, okay? We are not, we don't have a rubric that says this many points for this and this many points for that. But it's how are you evaluating the application as a whole? How does it come across to you? And for different proposals, different things may carry different amounts of weight. So you want to put together a really strong overall proposal. Start early. So for those who have, are not applying this year, you've got plenty of time. Read the solicitation. Go back to it again. Look at it again. Take advantage of the GRFP website. That is not, I think it's GRFP.org, nsfgrp.org. So there's a lot of other information on that website that you can refer back to. Look at the frequently asked questions. And really think about how you're going to tell your story to make yourself stand out from the other applicants that are putting in that application. Ask your letter writers to confirm and submit as early as possible. They, I believe, if I remember from when I've been submitting these letters of reference, once you submit your application, the portal then becomes available for them to submit their letters. Hopefully, they would have their letters written and drafted before you actually hit submit on your application. That way, all they have to do is follow through and upload their letters. Get as many people to review your application as possible before you submit it. Bad things are typos, spelling errors, grammatical errors. You want to avoid all of those. They just detract from the overall sense of the application. All right, these are the web resources, and so these slides will be available. If you want them, they'll be available on the BMS website. So take advantage of these, read through these. Talk to people on your campus, your undergraduate campus if you're still in the undergraduate program, your graduate campus. A lot of our programs now really make an effort to support students in these applications. Take advantage of that. And good luck. And we're going to bring up the panelists now that I will introduce, so if you can all come on up here. Did Patrick arrive? All right, we'll just do two and two. That's fine. All right, let me bring up. All right, so let me introduce some great volunteers who have come to help us out. So Hannah Grover is a recent awardee who is now at Dartmouth College. We're missing Patrick. And Alexis Zimba is at RPI, also a recent awardee. And then we have Jaclyn Henderson, who is at Bradley University. She is a reviewer for GRFP, so I can give you some of the insight from that side of things. And we had another reviewer lined up who pulled out, so I tasked our new Associate Program Director, Stephen Zender, with sitting up here on the panel, because he, at NSF, there are so many applications with this program, the Program Directors and other NSF staff help out in overseeing each other's reviews. And Stephen has experience doing that, so I think he will have a lot of insight. So let's start with Hannah. Can you just give a brief synopsis of what you think made your application successful?
Sure. So I was one of those people who graduated and had a bachelor's degree and was not yet started their graduate study. So I think that was very helpful, because I was also doing research in the lab that I had planned to start my PhD in. So I had a full summer where I was able to figure out what the research I wanted to do was and kind of put together a more tailored application.
And Alexis?
So I took three years off before I started graduate school, so that gave me a lot of time to fill out my resume and just get a lot more research experience, more outreach experience, other things that could really make my application stronger. I also worked really closely with my advisor for about six months on it, even before I started graduate school. So I knew who I'd be working with, and he was able to start coaching me on that.
So did the two of you then technically apply as first-year graduate students? So were you in the first year of your graduate program when you submitted the application? So Hannah, not you. You were, you submitted it while you were still a post-bac student. Okay. Jackie, what would be the biggest takeaway you would provide to the students based on your experience reviewing these?
There are some things, even though I like everything that you went through, your reviewer letters are really important. So when you go through, make sure that you know who the reviewers are, what's, not reviewers, who are your, people who are giving your recommendations are. And what's really helpful, sometimes they even ask you to draft one. I don't know if I'm supposed to tell that or not. But you all will learn, a lot of times you'll go to a professor, or go to an advisor or mentor, and they'll say, can you kind of put some things together? So make sure you have your statement, your resume, anything that you've been interested in, because you want them to be able to tailor it and make sure that it's personal. Because there's nothing like seeing a recommendation letter that's very general, it's kind of put together, but you're like, they don't really know the student, and you can kind of tell that. So that's important. Also, your broader impacts. You can tell as a reviewer if the student has a passion for certain things, or if they're like, well, yeah, I kind of went to this high school and we did this, or we kind of did this. You can actually tell how that sounds, no matter how good it sounds to you. You can tell as a reviewer. So those two things, I think, are very important.
Stephen, what's been your experience?
I'd like to second a few things that Jackie actually said that are very important. It is a holistic review process. We always, the mantra that we always tell our reviewers is it's the person, not the proposal, which is the exact opposite of every other NSF proposal that one could submit. You know, so making sure that, especially in your reference letters, I won't say necessarily to write it for your reference letter writer, but to provide them with the materials, provide them with your, with a draft of your GRFP proposal, so that there's no mismatch. You know, somebody, it could be a concern that, oh, wow, this person has a great application, but there doesn't seem to be that sort of enthusiasm from the, from the reference writers. It's just like one sentence, this guy's up there. And another thing that I'd like to focus on is just like with writing a regular NSF proposal, have somebody else read it. I know personally for myself, I can never catch my own grammar and spelling errors and period punctuations. It just makes the whole package look more professional. It cuts out one distraction that could distract reviewers. look more professional. It cuts out one distraction that could distract reviewers that go, wow, you know, maybe, there's so many spelling and grammar errors here, it's hard to follow. You know, make sure that people can also read it, same as a regular NSF proposal. Do people know what you want to do in your proposal? You know, so I think that, that's my advice. Also, on the bioengineering and the biomedical engineering, the way that I always kind of thought about it in my head is that it was just the application space. But you're right that there's a, there's sort of an overlap, so choose the right, I'd say, you're all probably applying for biomedical engineering. If there is a medical application space, that's where I would apply to.
And picking up on the whole typos and things, there is a finicky issue at half the NSF, or most of the NSF submission portals, whether we're talking about proposal submission or review submission. NSF systems, we have invested more in individuals over the years than we have in our own IT infrastructure. So our systems don't like smart characters. And so if you cut and paste into boxes, you have to be very careful that certain characters that you would not normally think are a problem, like quotation marks, don't get turned into question marks.
Yep.
Okay? So my recommendation is, if there is a, once you set up your application, if there is a print this application, or some other way that you can see how it is going to be converted to the PDF that the reviewers are going to get to see, do that before you hit the final submit button, so that you can check and make sure that there are none of these odd question marks. And reviewers understand that this happens, but it is still distracting. So it's just one of those things to keep track of. So Hannah, can you describe what your project was, what your background was, and your personal statement? How did you make yourself attractive to get this award?
So my background at the time was that I had just graduated from the University of Maine, which is a state school, and that I had done a major in bioengineering and a minor in mechanical engineering. And one of the things that helped me on my application was that I was always more geared towards biomechanics side of biomedical engineering. And so I did apply for the mechanical engineering track, which helped me stand out, I think, a little bit, especially since women are very underrepresented in mechanical engineering. And then, sorry, what was the?
So, and did you, are you doing your graduate work in a mechanical engineering program now?
So Dartmouth College, the Thayer School of Engineering, does not actually have departments. So while I'm on a mechanical engineering track, I'm not actually going to get a PhD in mechanical engineering.
Gotcha. And what about any outreach or other aspects that you pointed to beyond your research experience that you think helped you stand out?
So I tried to be pretty engaged in my community as an undergrad. I worked with the Society of Women Engineers, and we volunteered with children at the NASA Challenger Center in Bangor. So I really liked to work with kids and try and encourage them to join STEM fields. I hadn't done a lot of outreach as an undergrad, so one of the things that I was sure to include was how much I wanted to become involved in my community, in my graduate program. So I went on to list some of the clubs and activities that I planned to join as a graduate student, even if I wasn't currently involved in them.
Alexis, what about you?
So because I took three years off, I'd worked in a lab as an undergrad, and then, again, post-undergrad as a lab tech. So in my statement, I really focused on what my specific role was in each project I worked on, to show that I made a lasting contribution that would help the lab after I left, that would kind of contribute something to the field. And then in terms of broader impacts, I did a lot of outreach during undergrad. I worked with middle and high school kids, actually, I think even preschoolers at one point, bringing them into our labs, and having them do hands-on demos with microscopes and things. So I really elaborated on that and talked about my specific experiences, and again, my specific role in everything, because I think if you just focus on what your project is, and not what you did, it doesn't help the reviewers see how you'll be a leader in your field.
Jackie and Stephen, so on the research, the two-page research statement, what sort of things are you looking for? Or Stephen, have you seen the reviewers look for in terms of what stands out for that two-pager?
Good question.
Jackie, you want to go? Are you going to put me out there first?
I'm going to put you out there, yeah.
Okay. I will tell you what, what was helpful for me to read it, having the personal statement link into the research. So you could have an individual who might say, you know what, I grew up where maybe my mother, father, some relative, some good friend, maybe, for example, was in a wheelchair. Something happened, they had an accident, and, and maybe I wanted to go into dealing with people with disabilities, but I wanted to be able to design something, develop something that did this. So it linked right into the research. It was very clear statement. And then when they said, hey, the type of research I would like to do was kind of based on where their personal statement came from. So to me, it was a very clear statement. It kind of showed me where they wanted to go and where their passion may have lied.
That's, that's actually pretty interesting, because I didn't notice that on my end, listening to the conversations of, of the reviewers. But what I think Jackie is hitting on is really important, which is telling a good story, having, having the right structure, beginning, middle, and end, to say, you know, I'm, I want this GRFP, this is why, these are the steps that have brought me here. Being, being very clear with your language, because the thing that I've noticed in either the research discussion or broader impacts discussion was, I don't know what this person really wants. I don't, I don't know if they even really want to do research. I don't know if they, if they really want a GRFP, you know? So being very clear about that, I think is the right, you know, I could think about specifics in the research plan, but my, my number one thing that I would key into when I would listen to the discussion of the reviewers is, you know, have, have these applicants really thought about what they want to do and communicated it in a way that makes sense.
And I don't think there is a single one way to do that. So as I said,
No.
You need to make this, the, both statements true to you, real stories that will capture the attention of the reviewers. Jackie, how many did you read? How many were you assigned to?
I'm trying to think the years. Probably, I want to say 10. It could have been more. I don't remember, but it's,
Yeah, so each reviewer-
It was during Christmas time.
Each reviewer gets a large number of applications to read. You want yours to stand out, okay? So again, really work on that storytelling. We're going to open it for questions in a couple minutes, but do, do any of the panelists have a last statement that they want to make? Something that they want to say that they haven't already covered before we open it for questions?
I'd like to kind of add on to what's just been said. I think one of the other aspects of my application that helped it stand out was I really elaborated on my future goals. I had a whole page on looking forward to show that. I had plans after graduate school on how I would continue with my broader impacts, how I'd continue with my research, and how I was going to do that. I think the more clearly defined your future goals are, the easier it is for your reviewers to see how you'll be a leader in your field.
I would agree with the two reviewers that your recommendation letters are very important. And while I didn't write mine for my recommenders-
I didn't say you had to write it, but they may, but they may ask you to draft up something for time.
I did provide outlines of specific details that I would like included, because these professors do steal a lot of students, and they might not remember that you TA'd that course for them, or that you were really helpful in this course. So it's good to just include like some highlights when you're asking them for a letter, to remind them of things that you have done in their class for them, or as a student.
And I unfortunately, I have been, even at this stage of my career, been asked to write my own recommendation letters for people then to revise and sign. It is the toughest writing assignment you will ever have. So hopefully, just, hopefully they'll accept just the outline, because that's a little easier to do.
Just trying to think. What I, what I would say in there, don't be, I guess, don't be ashamed to put out there whatever it is that got you interested in it. Because most of the time, we look at it, and it's like, this person's from a smaller institution, but they've done X. Or maybe they're from a larger institution, and they were still able to stand out. If you're a person who doesn't like to deal with kids and secondary education, please don't think that broader impact just means you have to go to the local high school. There are some students who worked with their own peers in tutoring programs, or worked to develop something else, maybe help develop curriculum for some program that's on campus. Put that down. If, if, just because if you don't do that, that's fine. But you need to figure out a way to encaps, incorporate what that broader impact's going to be, even if it's not with children.
So I, you know, in thinking of a final or parting statement from me, this is going to sound kind of odd, but you don't need the GRFP to go to graduate school, too, by the way. And I kind of want to stress that, just so that you don't get stressed out by the whole process. I didn't even know it existed when I went to grad school. And when an undergrad working for me said, hey, I'm applying for this GRFP, could you write a letter of recommendation? I said, what? You know, what is this? I could have done this? You know, you can still be a successful researcher. So I tell this to you as a, as a, you know, huh, just a relaxing statement. You can still be a successful researcher. You can still be supported in graduate school, I mean, without the GRFP. So, you know, don't, I would say, don't beat yourselves up over this. But I think it is a very good writing exercise to, to really clarify your thoughts about what you want to do. So, you know, good luck, but don't stress.
All right. Why don't we open it up for questions? Yeah, come up to the mic, introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm also Hannah, so really cool name that you got there. I'm a second-year BME grad student at Georgia Tech. And I already finished writing my application and everything, but my question is kind of more for the people who are going to be reading it. Since I'm a second year, I think that everyone reading it is going to assume that I didn't come up with my own proposal idea, because I will have been in the lab for over a year, and so they're going to think I'm just writing about my project. And the reason I think that is because that's what all my friends are doing, who are also second years. But I actually did do a bunch of lit review and come up with my own idea. And I don't know if there's a way to, to communicate that, because I feel like it is different than my friends who just joined a lab and like were given a project, you know?
So I'm going to give you my first answer, and then state it clearly. Just, I mean, have a sentence in there. This is my project. I owned it. I was given the opportunity to develop this. So.
Okay.
Other comments?
You know, I don't think that that's the direction that the conversations tend to go. I think there's an understanding of, that once you're, if you're applying in your first or second year, that you've had an advisor who's, you know, been a part of the research. I, I wouldn't say it's necessarily something that you should be concerned about, but I think it's a great thing that you can use to, to set yourself apart from other applicants. And I really, like, second what Michelle says. It's okay, and this is to everybody, it's okay to be upfront. If you really want to say something that stands out. I, I know, I grew up and I was told, you know, not to say good things about myself. But really, just be, just be upfront. I came up with this idea. I did the review. This is mine.
I mean, I don't think it's a bad thing to use a project from the lab that you're in.
No, no, it's not. Not at all.
Definitely, like, if you're in a lab, and this is what you're working on, then you should write about it.
It's not a bad thing. No, not at all.
But I think it is different that I actually came up with this idea myself, and like, I think it shows certain, like, I want to like tell them, so I just didn't know if it was tacky to like do that.
No, not at all. That's actually great. You should, you should do that.
That just shows that you're farther ahead than some of your other peers who are also applying. So that wouldn't be a problem at all.
Cool. Thanks.
Yep.
So I just had a question about the letters of reference. How, the short version is, how much does who the person writing the letter matter? For example, I, there's a graduate student who is very familiar with me and my work, who I might want to ask for a letter of reference. At the moment, though, like I said, they are a graduate student, and I'm wondering how much of a hindrance that would be towards my application.
I don't think I would think anything of it, that it's a graduate, somebody who you've worked with. I mean, there's some who have their undergraduate faculty members write it. I don't, it doesn't bother me. If it's someone who knows you, they know your work, they know what you've done, maybe you've come up with something working with them, you have a good work ethic. Those are things that we look for, so it doesn't matter.
I wouldn't get all of them from graduate students.
Right, but I don't, right, but one doesn't, doesn't matter.
You know, I think, I think a very passionate letter from a graduate student or a young faculty is much better than a very blasé letter from, from an established faculty, for sure.
Thank you.
Good morning. I have a question for Hannah and Alexis. So I'm an undergraduate, and I'm interested in applying to grad school. And so my question is, how did your P, your current PI, like, how do they react to, like, the fact that you have this grant? Like, how much does it affect, like, their decision to let you in their lab versus just like a personal benefit?
So my path to graduate school wasn't very straight. So I had actually started working for the PI who I applied for the graduate research fellowship. So he had asked me to apply for it while I was a researcher. So it was obviously something that was very beneficial if I received for him, because it offsets quite a bit of his costs. So-
It frees up funding, right?
Yes. So he was pretty happy that I did actually receive it, but have since moved labs. So it does give you some, it does give you some flexibility, though, because if you already have funding, it does make that shift to another advisor a little easier.
Okay, that's great.
So that is nice.
Thank you.
One of the main reasons why I chose my current advisor was because he encouraged me to apply for that. So I wanted to play a very active role in getting my own funding, being able to work on projects with my own direction. So that was one of the big things when I met with him during my visit weekend. He said, you know, if, no matter where you go, you should apply for this, and you should, you know, start these steps now. And so I chose him because he wanted me to apply for that, and started with that mentoring role on how to, you know, get that in motion. So it was a very big deal to him. And, and now, after, with every student he's had since, he pushes that very, very much.
Thank you.
Hi. I was wondering if, as a reviewer, you look at how much it matters if this is your first year as a graduate student, or as a second-year graduate student? Because I started in the spring semester, starting my PhD, so I was wondering if that had any influence on anything?
I would say as a, as someone who moderated the review panels, I would tend to try to quell that discussion, I guess. You know, I think, I think looking at someone holistically, there are maybe concerns when, when someone has worked a bit longer and comparing them to their peers, but no, I think they want to, I think whether you started in the spring, or you started in the fall, or you've been a year or two years, you know, as long as you've got a clear vision, I think that it shouldn't, it shouldn't affect you much. And if you had good, good panel moderators, they'll make sure to quell any sort of wayward discussion that might influence that.
And then I also have a second question. I am very heavily involved in an organization on our campus for college students with intellectual disabilities, so Downshifts Room, Autism, things like that. So one of the reference letters that, one of my reference writers that I chose was a woman who was in charge of that department in our education department. So in terms of me sending her my research plan, is it, since she's in the education department and really doesn't have anything to do with my research, is it going to hinder me if she doesn't mention it, and just like focuses on my broader impact and education development?
All of your recommendations or reference letters don't have to speak about your research or where you're going. It, just saying, this is a person I know, maybe I have, I say I have three, one is going to address, address my broader impacts. That's fine.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Hi. I'm an international candidate at Dwing MS in South Dakota State University. So my question is, can, international candidate can apply for this kind of fellowship?
You, you have to be a US citizen or permanent resident.
Okay, okay. And there's something called intern. It's a new opportunity. I just found it on the website, so can you tell me about that?
Sure. So intern, this is, I guess, the second year that the intern program has existed. And the intern supplement can be added on to any existing award to the NSF, from the NSF. GRFPs are one of those that count. It can also be added on, a PI can request it if they are currently funded by NSF. What it does is provide funding for, I believe, up to six months of internship in industry. You have to have letters of collaboration. You have to have a specific position that you would be going to industry to join. And so it provides additional funds to allow you to do work in industry outside of your research lab that is hopefully connected back. So if you're applying as a GRFP student, you're not applying while you are, I mean, it's not part of your GRFP application. It's a secondary application once you are working. And there are probably some slightly different mechanisms, depending on- And there are probably some slightly different mechanisms, depending on which way you're coming. Intern is available for international students. If your faculty advisor is supported by an NSF grant, if they have an NSF award that you are then supported on as a graduate student, they can apply for an intern supplement on your behalf. And I personally think that you should be directly involved with writing that, because you want it to support your professional development in getting this industry experience so that you have that exposure beyond the traditional academic pathway.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, my name's Chelsea, and I'm an undergraduate applying, and I've been working in a research lab for three years, and I've kind of been shifted into more of like a graduate-type project in that lab. For the application, would it be better just to, like, continue, like, here's the project I've been done, here's how I've structured it, here's how I would plan to complete it if I was staying there for my graduate study, or is it better to come up with something entirely new for, like, application?
I'm hesitant to say something is better or not better in that case.
I would say, describe the research project you actually want to do.
Okay.
So, and you can talk about your past experience, because that got you to where you are, but if you have no interest in pursuing this area as a graduate student, it's not going to come across with as much interest and passion.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'm a first-year PhD student, and so as a, as a first-year PhD student who has switched institutions and somewhat of my research field, and who has developed, but has developed strong relationships with faculty at my new institution over the last year and a half, how would you feel about letters from my previous institution versus current institution?
I think when it comes to these questions about the letters, the important thing is that they align with the, with the direction that you want to go, that you, that you demonstrate in your application, and that they're passionate and enthusiastic about you and the things that you're enthusiastic about, you know? So, I wouldn't necessarily say that there's any harm in having people that you worked with at a previous institution write you a letter of recommendation. They know you, they know the work that you've done, they know what you're capable of, and if they can convey that, I'd say, you know, that's great. If you could get somebody, too, from your, your current institution, that's also good. I think having a good mix of people to give you a recommendation is...
Right. So, I guess, to clarify, so I'm in this situation where I have multiple people from both institutions, and I'm just wondering if I were to have three letters from people I'm working on in my current research field at, like, my current institution, would that raise a red flag, like, oh, why didn't he have someone from his previous research lab and undergrad?
I don't, I don't look at them like that. They just need to be strong letters. I'm with that. I mean, it'd be nice, maybe, if you had one from your previous, as long as the relationships were great, but if you have three from your current, that's okay, too.
It's not like a job where if you don't list as a reference your previous employer, they wonder why, because you are limited in the number of letters that you can actually provide.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Say, don't be nervous about it.
Yeah.
So, I guess I was going to just make a couple of comments, and then... Let the recipients and maybe the reviewers respond as well. So, one of the things I didn't hear, but I kind of alluded to it, or I think Jackie kind of alluded to it, is you want your, you know, you want your story to stick out, and you want, you know, to, the reviewers to remember what it is that you're going to do. And I haven't heard anyone talk about the importance of an excellent graphic. So, for me, when I'm reviewing, you know, we'll get 12 to 16 really long grants to review at once, my, what, what I come away from, I need that graphical snapshot. So, can you, and did you, or were you advised to illustrate your plan in a cohesive, coherent graphic? And is, are, are people being told to do that? Because I think that's so important.
I definitely was advised to do that in both statements. In my personal statement, I included a photo of me doing an outreach program with high school students. And then, in my research statement, I hadn't worked on the project yet, so I didn't have any preliminary data. I think if you do have that, that would be beneficial. But I included a brief schematic of the material I was planning to make and what I proposed to make. And I definitely agree that that's helpful, because it gets rid of some of the text space, for sure.
So, I didn't have any pictures in my personal statement, but in my research plan, because I had spent the summer already doing some research where I didn't have, like, any real data yet, I still did have two nice figures, I think, that I was able to put into my research statement, which I agree kind of helps break up a really plain-looking page of text.
Well, and more than just, you know, like, data, a plan of work, a graphical plan of work, you know, an illustration. If somebody looks at it, they're going to see everything you want to get done in your, in your time period.
Yes, I definitely always, yeah, that was one thing that was very much stressed, was start with your research plan, but always kind of end it with a, why are we doing this? What is the point of it? Are you going to be giving back to the community through your research? Are you going to be actually doing something beneficial for society? So, I always tried to tie in both my personal statement and my research, too, yes, this has broader impacts.
Right.
So, one thing that I'd like to stress after this conversation is, I'm also a graphics snob. I think graphics are great, and if you can have one that can outline, that can add to clarity of your application and outline what you want to do, that's great. But one thing that I do want to say is, you do not have to have done previous research to get the GRFP. You do not need to have preliminary data to get the GRFP or necessarily make yourself more competitive, and I really want to stress that. You know, if you can really convey yourself, who you are and what you're interested in, that's the most important thing.
If there's no other question, you have a question? Okay. Because I can make another question.
I'm curious to know how long you guys all spend reviewing an individual application, because I've heard, like, five to 10 minutes, so confirm or not, I don't know.
It's always been longer than 10 minutes, because it, I'll be honest, there are times when I read them, and then I stop, and I go do something else. I come back, I have to read it out loud, then I'm like, oh, I didn't catch it the first time. So, it's, it's much longer than 10 minutes. I can promise you that, even though I said it was during Christmas time, and it is, but because we start reviewing, what, in January, something like that? So, you're starting during the, our Christmas break, so after the long nap that we need to recover from our semesters, too. It still takes longer than 10 minutes, I will tell you that. It takes a while.
But I would say, the easier you make it for the reviewer to understand what at points you're getting to, the better it is. So, if you could actually make an application that in 10 minutes, they really get what, everything you're going to do, that would be perfect.
That will stand out.
So, I have another question. So, my research proposal is centered around an extension of our machine learning approach for our, for neural decoding, and I'll be working with historical, like, patient data. However, we're also in later stages for a clinical trial with patients. Should that be something that I should leave out of my proposal, or can I still mention it tangentially? What is your advice?
If you were to even mention it, it would be a broader impact, I think. You know, the NSF doesn't fund clinical trials. I'd really focus on the fundamental gains in the machine learning approach to analyzing the historical data that you have. That is actually, that is potentially a fundamental scientific question. Right.
Right. And then, as Stephen said, you can talk about, in the future, if we get this sorted out, then it can be applied, too, but don't mention that you think you might be involved in a clinical trial as part of your PhD. What you don't want, especially given the timelines for, and the limitations on applications, you don't want something to be kicked out because someone says, this doesn't fit NSF.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Sutton, do you have anything else?
I guess I have some reservations about telling students that it's okay to get a letter from a graduate student. And the reason for that, I would say, is that, you know, PIs write, like, dozens, if not hundreds, of these thousands over their lifetime, and there's kind of a code of words that you look for and phrases that you look for. And a graduate student who hasn't had that experience may miss an opportunity to really highlight what's important about you. So, when I get a letter from a graduate student, which I do often, they will say things like, you know, this undergrad comes to lab on time, they've never broken any glassware, they're really friendly, and they get along well with everybody. And that means nothing to me as a PI. And so, then, they give me that letter, and I translate that to be, this person, you know, has complete ownership of an original research idea, and, you know, has worked at the level of a first-year graduate student or a second-year graduate student. You know, there are things that you look for, and you look for terms like, I support this student, or I give high, you know, enthusiasm, you know, outstanding enthusiasm. So, there's, unless you feel like the person who's writing this letter for you has that level of experience, I would say, take that letter, get it to a PI, let the PI translate, and don't miss an opportunity. That would be...
Right.
That's fair.
That's good.
And you may have, you may be working with a grad student who was out in industry for a long time and has not only their research experience, but their industry experience, and maybe they do have that ability to, to really write that amazing letter for you. So, definitely don't run away from them, but I do like Dr. Sutton's suggestion. If there's a grad student who has been overseeing your work in a PI's lab, have the grad student and the PI work together on that letter, and that way, the PI is not going, now, what did you do? Because the PI is not there on a daily basis, but it is then worded more strongly.
It's choosing people who can speak enthusiastically about you, you know? Ultimately, that's what it is. If you think a graduate student could do that, then, yes, get them to write it, but if you don't think, if you think that they'll just say things that Dr. Sutton has said, you know, like, ah, they showed up, you know, that's not the letter that you want. It's definitely not.
Any other questions? Yep. And are there any questions that have filtered on index cards to the aisle that we need to pick up? Okay, no, go for it.
So, you've mentioned a couple times about telling a good story in your personal statement. I think I have a good story. My early twenties were kind of a messy time for me, and I feel like I've kind of been a phoenix rising from the ashes since then. How much detail do you want me to get into that? How dark do you want it to get in the personal statement?
We don't want to know why you have come out of ashes, but, we don't want to know about the ashes.
All right.
But, no, I mean, tell, without disclosing any personal details that you would not be comfortable disclosing, do not feel like you have to do that, but talking about the fact that you, you've gone through this transition really does kind of lead into things, and can mitigate issues with transcripts, or what happened, where's, why is there this gap in productivity? So, I think, again, without disclosing any personal details that you would not want to disclose, and it's completely up to you, because it's your statement, so it's whatever you're comfortable with. It's somewhat, I mean, it's similar to talking about family things. I mean, how much detail do you go into with the family background that, yes, drove you to study this? Tell the story, but you do not have to put a single detail in that you're not comfortable with, and you're limited in space, so you don't want to take too much time describing the background, you want to describe where you're going to.
Right. Okay, thank you.
The one thing I think we didn't bring up when talking about reference letters, try to ask for them months in advance, if possible. I do know that I get a lot of requests, short, short notice, and I do stop to do them because I know how important they are. But if you can ask for them in advance, even though you might still have to ask, but stay behind whoever that, that, you're going to write the recommendation, hey, have you had a chance to do it yet? Have you had a chance to do it yet? That helps. I will tell you, as a person who writes them, it helps. So, it's up to you to also stay on top of the people who are writing the reference letters for you.
Set the original deadline of when they need to have it written in advance of when you actually need it, okay? Faculty are notorious about working to deadline. The funny thing is, this will impact you moving forward. NSF has done away with grant deadlines for a lot of our programs. The number of submissions has dropped substantially, because now there's no deadline for faculty to work towards. Anyway, so, give them that deadline early, because we're all very busy, just like you guys are busy, so make sure that they know it and follow up. And yes, I still, I mean, I get emails now, did you write that letter? And I'm sitting there going, yeah, it's been on my to-do list for two months. But, yeah, so, of course, now I'll stop everything and make sure this gets written, but follow up, but give them enough time to do that. Any other questions?
I mean, I can keep going.
But we've got, we've got 20 minutes left in the session, so...
So, my project is, I'm funded by an NIH training grant right now, and so I've done a little bit of NIH stuff, but I'm, and so my project basically boils down to being a fundamental biological inflammation mechanism question, so is that, like, fundamental enough?
Absolutely. Yes.
But it had, because, like, I was starting to get concerned that you guys were like, no NIH stuff, because, like, I'm on an NIH grant, so I kind of have to do NIH stuff sometimes.
No, that's fine. I mean, that's not a problem. You want the project you describe to be fundamental. And in biomedical engineering, there is crossover, and there's gray area, and we understand that, but you want to conceptualize it as, what is the fundamental issue that I'm dealing with here, rather than, what is the translational, how am I going to apply this to treat inflammation or something of that nature?
So, is it okay if it's, like, narrowed to airway inflammatory? That's not too narrow? Okay, because it's not even limited to one disease, it's like a class of...
No, that's fine.
So, you know, I got this question yesterday when I was at the table, and the thing that I like to tell people is that, you know, you can choose, like, a specific disease or a specific, you know, cancer system, what have you, and that it's allowing you, you choose it and you justify it by saying, this is, this model system that I'm using can really allow me to learn some fundamental biology, learn some fundamental mechanics, you know, learn, answer some really fundamental engineering question, rather than saying, I'm doing this to treat something, you know?
Yeah, so you just don't want, I'm developing this drug to treat this one disease?
Yeah, we don't, we don't do that.
Okay, so I've got kind of two closely related questions. First one, if I've got a current research project as an undergraduate, but it's kind of medical device-oriented, does my, does that affect how effective it would be on an application's previous research, or...
I would say, no. Previous experience in research is previous experience in research, so even if you're, and this doesn't normally happen, even if your previous experience was being involved with a clinical trial, but your planned project is NSF, I don't think anybody would hold that, and that's not going to disqualify you from applying.
Okay. Now, second question. As I mentioned, it's kind of oriented towards a medical device, so I'm kind of worried, like, what's the gray zone between NIH and NSF like? Like, is there the zone where, like, you could be covered by both, or is it that there's no overlap?
Oh, there's definitely overlap. So, what you need, and what you're going to have to talk with your advisor about, is what is the fundamental advancement in engineering that I'm looking at for this system? So, the application may be for a medical device, but we need to understand how this electronic principle works, or this mechanical principle works. We're looking at that fundamental engineering, and yes, the application then is going to be into a medical device, but this is the fundamental advancement. I mean, a lot of my, the programs I used to oversee had huge amounts of overlap. Disability and Rehabilitation Engineering is actually one of those programs at NSF that funds fundamental work, but I would say 75% of what we fund is actually also supporting small numbers of feasibility studies in patients, because when you're designing a system for individuals with disabilities, you'd better be making sure that it actually works in individuals with disabilities. So, there's, the gray area is fairly large. Talk to your advisor and try to focus in on what that fundamental question is, even within the framework of, if we get this to work, it's going to be applied to a medical device.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Good morning. I'm an admin. I'm a professor from UConn. I've been NIH-grantee all along, never had NSF grant, and I have students who I would recommend toward fellowships. Should I stay in NIH fellowship? Should I stay in NIH fellowship programs, or should I still have them try NSF grants, fellowships? What do you think?
Doesn't hurt to do either one, to me.
Yeah. Review wise, I know people in NIH field, not too much in NSF. Although there are overlaps there as well. But I don't know about review process, would that make any difference? Okay.
So I, it's been a long time. I was supported on an NIH training grant, and, but that was a long time ago. I mean, somewhat the differences that I understand, a lot of the NIH are training grants to the institution or to the faculty member of the department, whereas GRFP is really the student who's applying, rather than the program that's applying. So the key thing for GRFP is helping that student identify a project that is NSF-appropriate and then highlighting their ability. So within biomedical engineering, I would say probably 75% of faculty in BME have funding both from NIH and NSF, or at least NIH and then some of them NSF. So that crossover, we expect in this field. So the fact that there, that's where your primary source of funding is, would not influence the review panel. But you have to, again, focus in on what is that fundamental advancement that the student is describing in their project. Anything else? Yes.
I kind of have a more personal question. So my, I, I just graduated from undergrad in June, so I'm applying as, like, the first, I guess, like, the first section of the thing.
Yep.
So my research proposal is kind of more, I'll be a cell biology approach. Like, so my background's in biomedical engineering, but my undergrad lab was, like, mechanobiology. This is a lot more, like, cell signaling pathways, so my proposal kind of reflects that. So for my field that I pick, I'm not sure if I should do biomedical engineering, since that's kind of like what my education is in, and like, I'm more just like synthetic bio, like, that sort of field. Or if I should do cell bio, because I feel like the reviewers who look at it might have, like, a better understanding of the techniques or, like, signaling pathways I'm looking at. So if you had any, like, help.
What graduate program are you going to apply to?
Probably some biomedical engineering programs, because they have, like, a, it's kind of like an interdisciplinary area of, like, bio.
I would say biomedical engineering, then. I mean, you know, biomedical engineering put the second in cell biology. I am also a mechanobiologist, hi. And I was in a mechanical engineering department. So I mean, you know, there's a lot of, there's so much overlap between the different fields, I think. And especially coming from the perspective of, as a moderator of the panel review process. I mean, again, it's coming down to, they, they will talk about the science a bit, quite a bit, but they're also gonna talk about you and how well you convey your ideas. I mean, the reason why I keep harping on this is, this is the thing that came up when I, when I was moderating the panel, is how well do we understand what the person is doing? And if you can convey broadly to a biomedical audience your mechanobiology project, I think that that's really good and really strong.
And one thing I've found is that biomedical engineering reviewers are not hung up on what the background is of the person applying to those programs, whether we're talking faculty or GRFP or anything. I don't know, and I don't want to assume, but in conversations I've had with individuals within the biology directorate, there are times that people from a biology background may not give as much credence to somebody applying in that program if they're coming from an engineering focus. So, and I don't know, and I don't wanna say definitely, but that would be a concern of mine if I were applying, that would I still stand out within the cellular biology group if I'm coming in with a BME undergraduate degree? With MBME, we've got students and faculty with engineering degrees, life science degrees, chemistry degrees. It's all over the place, and we're just used to that as a field, so no one holds a grudge about, well, this person doesn't have the correct background, because there is none. So, so that's another point to keep in mind.
Okay.
As a, as a reviewer, I have read some that were cellular, and that's not my area at all. So as long as the story is together, I'm fine with it. And I think that's just because we're so broad as far as biomed, I think it would be fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Got a couple more. Yeah, come up to the mics if you wanna ask a question, just because I don't wanna cut people off before. And we'll go to the back mic first, and then we'll come back.
Hi, I also just finished my undergrad in BME this past May. And I was wondering if you could talk maybe a little bit about, I guess, positive examples you've seen of people really tying together broader impacts in, like, a personal statement sense, where it was, like, things that I did during my undergrad versus broader impacts of, in your research statement, kind of related to what you're doing, making that a cohesive storyline?
I'm thinking...
Do either of our wardies have thoughts?
So the broader impacts in terms of my educational outreach was very different than the broader impacts of my research. So I definitely talked about both in my personal statement, because I work in a spinal cord injury lab, so my work has a lot of, a lot of prospect for veterans and patients with paralysis. And so I focused on that, because I think it would be really great to collaborate with a VA hospital. And so that's something I addressed in my personal statement, in addition to the outreach with the local students. And so in my research statement, I focused primarily on that aspect and how this could be beneficial to patients, you know, war veterans with paralysis. I also focused on, in terms of my research, the novelty of material and how that can advance the field and, and help others, not only in our spinal cord injury regeneration, regeneration niche, but also in the materials realm, too.
I would agree with that. I did the broader impacts differently as well for both my personal statement and for my research statement. On the research side, I focused on what my research would do for the field and also how I plan to mentor students in that field, both high school and undergraduate. And then in my personal statement, I talked more about how I wanted to become a professor later on so that I could mentor even more people, especially underrepresented communities. So you kind of have to tailor it, because it is talking about two different kinds of broader impacts.
I, I mean, I've seen some where they have linked them together a little different than you all as a reviewer. I've seen some people who've talked about maybe their love of robots and all that. So they had a broader impact with that, but then they also linked that into their research. So they were able to make it a clean statement. So it's just about what your personal statement and interest are.
I have nothing to add.
Front?
So I've had advice from people who have gone over my personal statement in terms of my broader impact in writing about volunteering and mentoring and being a classroom assistant to students on campus with intellectual disabilities. Do I specifically have to tie their goals in that program to the STEM field?
What do you mean exactly?
So somebody told me to, like, the goal, ultimate goal of the program is to give them life skills, like cooking, budgeting, apartment maintenance, safety around campus and things. So the woman that I was talking to wanted me to tie things that they learned to the STEM field. So I was, I feel like I'm making, like, really huge jumps, if that makes sense, in terms of, like, they need to be able to develop problem-solving skills. I called cooking a science, like...
Well, I was gonna call, like, budgeting math.
Yeah. That's what I did, yeah.
Well, what would be the difference if you were working with first graders? What you're doing with them is very fundamental, you know, addition, you know, and just kind of linking it. If you're dealing with people with various developmental, you know, delays or disabilities or limitations, whichever word you use, I think it's, you can link them, but I don't, don't make it an overreach. Just say, this is what I, this is what we did. I think that, to me, that would be great. This is what we did, and this is how I did it. That's where your passion is, so don't, I don't think you have to make a broad jump.
Okay.
You know, if, if you're gonna write something and you feel uncomfortable writing it, we're gonna, we're gonna read it and we're gonna know that you're uncomfortable writing it. You know, not, not to sound like, not to sound like a number of famous rappers, but do you? I mean, really, like, you know, we, we'll, it'll really become clear that this is not your idea if, if it's not. If you're not comfortable with it.
Yeah, I was just asking, because she's more of, like, helping people in our department with, like, writing, not really, like, NSF-related.
Right. No, I mean, and I would just say, if it's a natural fit, think about those links. If it's not a natural fit...
Don't make one.
Yeah, don't force it. But if you are providing individuals with disabilities with opportunity that they can then build on and be a more productive member of society, maybe then they, I mean, you can add in that. That then gives them the opportunity to explore everything else. So, I mean, draw that big picture, but don't force it into the little, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Hi, I'm a senior undergrad applying to the GRFP, and I wanted to know your thoughts on mouse models and if they're used for a fundamental biological question, and you're clear about that. Is it still okay to discuss your establishment of the mouse model and then funnel that into investigating the biological question?
Absolutely. NSF does not have a problem with in vivo animal studies. As I said, a lot of our BME programs will allow and involve a small number of studies in humans for feasibility studies. That is absolutely fine. So the one thing I always caution, if you are applying to a biomedical engineering field or program, is to try to remember that you are an engineer. And so make sure that the project you're describing is somewhat engineering-oriented. You're integrating that engineering in there, and you're not just describing a biology problem.
For example, my original proposal was on the mechanics of brain development in the chicken model. So I did submit something that was based on a biological model.
Anything else? Go for it.
Go on, I'm telling you all day. It's so interesting to talk to actual reviewers, anyway. Not that I spend my whole life thinking about the GRFP, I have other things to do, anyway. So I work with the incarcerated population, teaching, I teach them a STEM class. I'm, like, kind of worried that I might get, like, a judgy reviewer who's, is that, like, irrational? Okay. I guess my parents are, like, really, they're like, why are you, like, working with prisoners? They don't deserve to, like, have science.
We, as, as a moderator, if I even heard that discussion come up, I would, I would knock it down immediately. That, that's, you know, your reviewers are people, but that's the reason why we have people moderating their discussions, is to make sure that, that, that shouldn't be an impact.
Okay, because I was kind of afraid to, like...
On my panel, I've never seen anything like that. Normally, if you, if we saw something, you'd say, wow, okay, they're doing, you, you just take it in. Everybody has a story, and you just go, wow, okay, they're doing something different than most students, and...
Yeah, I was just kind of afraid that it would, like, okay. I realize that might be irrational, so...
You're worrying about something you don't have to. That one was good.
Anything else? All right, well, I wanna thank everybody for coming out this early in the morning. Thank you for sticking it out. We've lost some people. This session hopefully will occur next year as well, so tell your colleagues, especially if they are junior undergrads next year, to come and listen early. And for those of you who are submitting your applications next week, best of luck.
Yes, good luck.
We hope to see you at these meetings for decades to come, the next 50 years. Thank you.